Normal, so I don't beat the gavel this time. But just like to welcome everyone here to the continuation of our February 1st meeting to consider a couple of items that we had pulled at that particular time to be reconsidered at a later date, which this meeting was properly advertised. Today is February 9th, 2016. The time is 9:00 a.m. Typically, we, again, we have, this is just a continuation of the meeting, but in light of the fact that we need God's direction and guidance, we'd like to stand, and I'll give the invocation, and I'll lead you in the pledge.
Please rise.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the time to be able to rise here today to be to another day of life in your service, and we just thank you for the ability to come and to do the business of the county. Please give us your spirit and proper direction and guidance. We ask that you watch over our families wherever they may be. Bring them home safe to us tonight. We ask that you watch over our first responders, our soldiers, and our volunteers wherever they may be, whatever type of work they're doing. Please be with them. And all these things we ask and thank you for, in Jesus Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have a copy of our, of the agenda, we're on item number eight. Consider agreement with the Swanee River Economic Council, Inc. for use of the county-owned building located at 120 Swanee Avenue in Brantford. The county attorney had requested that some information, or that an agreement be updated in regard to this, and I'll turn our attention over to him to give us an update and a report on that and see if we can take any action on it this time.
You can go ahead and just pull the item for the moment, and we'll place it back on the next agenda. I haven't been able to get with the other item.
Okay.
See if they approve of it, which two.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll consider that at our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Moving down to item number 16, discuss with possible board action various items related to the state's attorney's office. We'll turn our attention over to Randy Harris, County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I had asked that this be pulled. As most of you know, I was out ill during the last meeting, but that really was not the primary reason for pulling the item. I had asked the chairman to pull the item because it wasn't quite ready at that time, although I knew what we needed to discuss. There were some other parties that Mr. Pravat and I needed to have conversations with before we actually brought this back to the board. One thing, Commissioners, that I'd like for you to consider is a stack of conceptual drawings, which is really building layouts, on county-owned property and then on some potentially new property if the board decides they want to purchase more property. But when I came to the meeting before and showed you a conceptual plan, it was actually number two in the stack that you have. But let me just go through these drawings with you, and then we'll discuss each in a little more detail. Number one is a drawing that I started with. I had gone to Mr. Alcorn's office, and I started with this drawing. The only problem, significant problem, that I had with it at the time was that it really didn't lend itself to future expansion as well as some other possibilities did. You can see with the orientation of the proposed building that it doesn't line up with the property line in that back corner. But moreover, if we built a building in that configuration with the parking lot, the public parking established in the front, if we were to expand that building straight on to the north, which would have to take in part of the property that Genealogy is currently sitting on, we'd have a limited ability to expand public parking even if we could accommodate the secure parking back to the east toward the jail. I never brought you this drawing. Drawing number two is the one that we did speak of previously. This was simply an attempt to see if we could fit everything that needed to be fit onto property that the county currently owns. We talked about the front of the building facing the stadium. The back of the building would have, or behind the building between there and the jail or the street, Pine Avenue, would be the secure parking. You'd have your public parking next to the parking lot of the judicial annex, but then the public could come into the front of the building. Everything that was left with that diagonal line was an area that the stormwater pond could be placed in and potentially some smaller buildings and maybe some additional parking. In that meeting, the board went ahead and authorized us to consider obtaining appraisals on adjacent properties, which really opened up a great deal more opportunity than we had previously. So, drawing number three is a reflection of a couple of things. First of all, I had to make contact with property owners that have properties where that large public parking area is shown on your drawing that runs parallel with Pine Avenue back over to Parsley. I made contact with the two property owners just to ensure that they would be agreeable to selling, and then we went in and ordered the appraisals. Commissioners, as you know, under the statute, we don't disclose our appraisals. We retain that information until such time that we negotiate an acquisition, and I'll be asking for your consideration on that today. But in any event, this drawing shows your public parking running parallel to Pine Avenue. The front of the state attorney's office was turned around. It now faces the jail. The building was brought right up to Pine Avenue. You can see the secure parking behind the building between there and the stadium, but you also recognize that in the future, if that state attorney's office needs to be expanded, it's a simple maneuver to just remove that parking lot behind it and continue nearly doubling the size of the state attorney's office. So the secure parking then could move back to toward Parsley, which currently says either future buildings or that stormwater area. This drawing, then, in my opinion, could potentially take us out 25 or 30 years on the state attorney's office. Drawing number four is very similar. One difference is you can now see where we've placed future parking to the north of the proposed building. This assumes that the state attorney's office has been doubled in size. We would then need to be required to double our public parking, and you can see where we've drawn that in on what is known as the Mizel property. That's drawn in up on the high end of the property. Most of you have realized, and I think I've had conversation with most of you, that the balance of the Mizel property is the lowest portion of this entire block right next to the Genealogy building. So at some point, if that future parking were built, and I want to talk some about stormwater retention, you know that most of that property is covered up with concrete now. There'd be substantial credits for existing impervious area, but if a pond were to be built to accommodate any of this that you see in this block, I'd recommend at that point that it go to the lowest portion of the block, which would be down there where it's currently covered with concrete. So those are all options. These configurations can be moved around, but clearly we can see that we have an opportunity. The board so chooses to not only build to address our current need with the state attorney's office, but we'd have plenty of opportunity in the future to double the size of that without having to consider relocating when the day comes that they need more space. I'll share with you, well, I tell you what, I want to perhaps try to finish the conversation on the drawings before I share more information with you on drainage and what the Water Management District actually requires, because I had a, had them write up response to questions that I thought would be helpful for everyone. If any of you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions of Mr. Harris by the board? Will everybody jump at once?
No questions.
I guess what...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, then I would simply ask the board to give us some direction.
Right.
We have obtained appraisals on two of the properties. The third one we do not have yet. We know the appraiser's been working on it. Mr. Pravat's been speaking with them. We hope to get that back soon. At this point, the two that we have would enable us, if the board gave us direction to consider an acquisition, we'd begin that negotiation. We'd try to wrap it up as rapidly as possible, get the information back to the board, because we would need to move very swiftly if we go in that direction. As you know, we've got contractor right next door working on the Nettie Bayston building. As soon as they're completed with their asbestos removal, that demo will begin. If we were going to consider those additional properties that we do have appraisals on, my recommendation would be that we go ahead and have the board authorize staff to negotiate with our contractor on piggybacking on our own contract to handle the demo of those other two smaller structures on that property.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Commissioner Fleming?
Can you disclose, would it be all right if we disclosed the one that you have the prepared?
No, sir. Not at this point.
Well, that's what I was going to say, was we have to make a determination if we're interested in acquiring any additional parcels, and if we are, that kind of leads us towards a layout that kind of encompasses the fact that we would purchase those additional lands. If we determine that we are not going to purchase additional property, then it lends to another conceptual plan of the layout of this project that we're considering. So the board, I need some input at this point as to what your wishes are in regards to purchasing additional property. The time, I will say that the time is now to do it, because once you've built the building and you need to buy it in the future, the price goes up exponentially once you've started developing and doing, when they know that you've got to have it later for future expansion.
Yeah, I'd say despite whatever plan we choose, we can move forward with the purchase of the property.
That would be my druthers.
I'll offer a comment as well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wainwright?
When we were first discussing this the other evening, it was my only concern in this location was just future growth. So as far as I'm concerned, we've only got two options. We either go back up there by Lowe's, which we decided we didn't want to do that, so that means we've got to purchase property here. As far as the, and I'll go ahead, while I got the floor, I'll go ahead. My choice of the conceptual plan Commissioner Gamble had offered, he thought it would be best if the building faced Pine Avenue, and I happen to agree with him. And I like the way this number three plan is drawn out. I really like that. That'll allow us plenty of opportunity to expand in the next 15 to 20 years or whatever the case may be. So anyway, that's, I'd say we need to go ahead and move forward with giving staff the opportunity to negotiate the purchase of those two lots on the corner that we've already got the appraisals for.
Okay. Is that, you want to put that in the form of a motion? Or do you want to include the Mizel property when that, when that appraisal comes in? It don't hurt to negotiate with them.
I was, I was just going to wait. I mean, if everybody, I mean, if there's no more conversation, then, then I can, but I mean...
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would say that I like, out of the two, I like number four.
Okay. I too like number four as well.
Well, that's the same thing, other than just...
Same thing, other than just including the Mizel property. You're right. Absolutely right. Just saying what I prefer.
Yeah, I agree.
Anybody else?
The only concern I have is moving forward, if we do piggyback this on the demolition, how much longer is it going to take to get this demolished? And of course, my original thought was, like Randy's very first thought, is if we didn't buy anything at all, number one would have been the best proposal. But now that we pretty much decided we're going to move on property, that we need to just go ahead and try to look at number three or number four. You know, it's fine with me.
Well, I guess what we need to know, what we need to know now, Board, is, is if we want to move ahead with, to allow staff and the county attorney to negotiate with the property, with all the property owners, all three of them, to try to acquire those properties. And if that is the case, then we need to either let them know that in some way, shape, or form, and then we can adopt whatever conceptual plan we, we decide after that. That's the way I see it going down unless anybody else has any objection to that.
I'll offer a motion to that effect.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to acqui, to allow staff to negotiate the acquisition of the three parcels, the two on the corner and the Mizel property, and then bring, bring back those proposals to us, I guess. Is that how that, is that what we're going to do?
Yes, sir. I mean, basically, what we'll do is, when we can reach a number with them, what we will have is an option to purchase.
Okay.
And the option then, you know, allows y'all time then to make that decision and bring it back to the public.
Okay.
You know, for them to be able to execute that agreement.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Gamble. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion?
Comment.
Or clarification? Commissioner Wainwright?
I just, I want to make sure that we've already got appraisals for the two lots. And as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's absolutely necessary to continue on with, with this location. The Mizel property is not going to be an issue that's going to, I don't, I don't want it to be a stopping point. If we can't negotiate that or if we can't purchase that right away, I'd still like to go ahead and pursue further, at least with those two lots, and get this thing taken care of.
I understand. I'm going to ask the attorney, is that something, can we, can we consider those individually at meetings as opposed to, as opposed to all three?
For each individual contract, you want?
Okay.
Okay.
So we're good, we're good with that.
I just wanted to make sure that was going to be a clarifying point.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, now, I just need a motion to adopt whatever plan that we're looking at. I prefer number four, but I can't make a motion to that effect.
Well, I think three or four.
Three and four are the same plan.
They're the same. Obviously, as if the opportunity exists to purchase the Mizel property, then, I mean, that's, nothing that's going to happen right away anyway.
Well, staff...
If I understood it right, four was just showing...
Right.
30-year projections if we needed to...
It's just showing some parking on the Mizel property.
Additional parking.
Additional parking and expansion if we needed to expand the building.
But it gives staff direction for the future.
Yeah.
But whatever you guys want. If you guys want to do three, then that's fine, too, but it doesn't, that's what you've adopted. It doesn't have a future provision for parking if that property is acquired. If the property's not acquired, obviously, we can't do it.
Well, it, Mr. Chairman, it does. Number three will. I mean, it's, you could extend the proposed building further to the west and eliminate that secure parking on the west side and bring that up to Parsley Street. But nevertheless, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of approving or may offer a motion to approve number three and four, just depending on what happens with the Mizel property.
I'd say three and four then.
Okay.
I mean, it's basically the same, other than just looking at some future parking, potential parking on the Mizel property.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve conceptual plans three and four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Is that everything you needed? Proceed.
Yes, I do want to discuss drainage, and I want to just comment that my hope is that Mr. Pravat and I are successful in bringing some contracts back to you in your next board meeting.
Yeah, or sooner if need be because of the timeline on the demolition.
I would like the board to authorize me to go ahead and begin negotiating with our contractor on demo as well.
Does everybody understand what, I mean, Mr. Wainwright?
Piggyback these two buildings on the side over here.
All right. So do we need a motion to that effect? Okay.
I'm making a motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Sessions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Do we all understand what we're approving here?
Yep.
Further discussion?
For proof and...
Demo of the two buildings here on these lots, if acquisition is...
Well, we're, approval to negotiate with them.
Yeah, negotiate along with, to piggyback it with, with the contractor.
I'll have the information. My plan is to have the information back to you in your next meeting on that as well.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Mr. Harris, you needed to talk about water.
I want to talk to you about drainage over a moment. Let me just, I just got to pass those down if you don't mind. I had a conversation with the, I've had multiple conversations with Water Management District about pre-construction, post-construction requirements for stormwater retention. Some very general comments were made in the last meeting that we were in about the size of the stormwater pond that would be required. Stormwater retention is measured in cubic area, not square footage, although an engineer can give you a general idea on the amount of square footage required for retention. We have a bit of a unique situation, though, when you've got existing buildings. We've run into the same thing. In fact, you'll see that the letter is addressed to an issue associated with the Douglas Center, but it applies to this as well. And the most important part of it, I underline for you in the third paragraph, and I'll read it, this has to do with essentially credit for existing impervious area when you're considering improvements on a property that may or may not require stormwater ponds. Reducing the quantity of existing impervious areas is an accepted way to reduce your potential retention, detention volumes from a water quality or quantity perspective. The water quality requirements are, however, based on total impervious area in the post-development condition. In general, significant redevelopment of a grandfathered site is required to meet the current stormwater rules and can result in the need for new retention, detention areas, or other stormwater management systems. That's the most important part of everything that they wrote related to this issue. I shared with you previously that these drawings are not engineered drawings. These were simply taking the squareage footage of buildings and what we knew was going to be required for parking and trying to fit them on the properties. So I don't want anyone on the board or in the public to think for a moment that any engineers participated in these layouts. The stormwater retention issue will be one that will ultimately have to be decided upon by the stormwater, or the Water Management District in cooperation with our engineers, and we will make some determination on what's going to be required. We know that we have a significant amount of existing impervious area, not only in the Nettie Bayston building, but also in the worn-out asphalt that's behind this building. So we will assume credit for all of that, but when you consider the technical requirements and rules and regulations, that is, in fact, one consideration. The other consideration, in my mind, especially as it relates to the Douglas Center, is that there's also the practical application. In the case of the Douglas Center, there's never been a stormwater plan, so there've been periods of sporadic flooding or too much water up between some of those buildings, and at some point, we may have an opportunity to correct some of that if improvements ever occur out there. So I wanted to share that with you and give you a copy of this information. This is really just general information from the Water Management District, but in my conversations with them, they agreed with my interpretation of their rules that you do get some credit, but at the same time, they, they're going to look at the overall improvements, even on a grandfathered property, and make a determination of what's going to be required going forward. So we just need to keep that in mind. I think we're going to be safe here. We've got plenty of room to do whatever we need to with the state attorney's office, but it's important to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any questions regarding the information that Mr. Harris passed out to us or addressed us?
I have a couple other comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Harris?
That are not related to stormwater retention right now.
So you're switching gears, huh?
Still on the same item associated with the improvements here. In this agenda, when the board approved the other day, you included the ground penetrating radar of the property, which I plan to utilize prior to construction, so we can just, to the best of our ability at least, ensure that we don't have immediate concerns with sinkholes. This area is certainly prone to sinkholes, always has been, isn't going to get any better. But hopefully, if we can avoid problems, now's the time to do it before you construct. So we'll undertake that ground penetrating radar on these properties as we continue with our negotiations and if we acquire that parking lot area as well, but primarily, my concern was the building. I wanted to talk to the board about clearing and leveling the site and some other services that are not included in the contract with McKinnis. All of your responders to that request for proposals had to make assumptions, and that's why you saw considerable variations in the allowances that each of those responders. And then, in my conversation with Mr. McKinnis and Mr. Pravat, we met the other day speaking of the terms of the contract and what would be included and what wouldn't. One issue that we emphasized was the importance of trying to save time. We can pay a contractor to take on these additional variables, removing trees, removing fences, leveling the property. We know now, for instance, I had some FOFO information put together by Mr. Alcorn the other day. If we put the front of the building near Pine, there's approximately a three-foot difference in elevation from Pine back to the west that we would incur. The contractor's plan is to start on a level site. Well, that isn't level. If the board would agree, I can bring road department personnel in here. We can use our equipment. We can scrape the site, remove the old asphalt. We can haul dirt in and level it. We can remove what trees would need to be removed if we acquired the additional property, and we could eliminate that as a cost plus that we would otherwise have to pay the contractor. What we would have to do is reimburse the road department for that expense, because the road department is funded with gas taxes. But we have the funding to do that as part of your loan, so you would either pay a contractor to do that work plus his overhead and profit, or you can pay the road department to do it. And the most significant difference between the two, in my mind, is the savings of time. The contractor isn't set up with the equipment that we're set up with. We could move in there and blow this thing out pretty quick, I believe, and then the contractor could start with a level site. He would still have to bring in his field dirt for the pad and anything else that was necessary, but we could save a considerable amount of time by letting him concentrate on his building, and the parking lots would have to be constructed and having the road department do other parts of the work. That isn't the only option you have. The other option is that we could go out to bid for some of that work. That just complicates things. But I'll do whatever the board wants done. Again, I've said many times, I'm simply a facilitator in this process. I'm trying to give you as many options as possible. If you want Mr. McKinnis to do all of that work, he's more than happy to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any questions regarding the site work and what your thoughts are on that, those options?
I'm fine with letting public works do it if we have the manpower and the resources to do it, not throwing anything else up.
Second.
So that was a form of a motion, Commissioner Gamble?
I'm moving to a motion.
I'd like it to be.
Clar, clarity. Motion made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I'd like to share with you, when Mr. Pravat and I met with Mr. McKinnis the other day, we tried to start, we backed our way into a calendar to try to, try to determine where we thought we would be with completion of a building. In a perfect world with good weather, we came up with the end of November. I have no idea right now how we're going to work through any potential acquisition, how much time that would take. I don't have any reason to believe that it will take a great deal of time since we already have the appraisals out of the way, and Mr. Pravat can assist with any title work that needs to be undertaken. I think we can expedite pretty quickly on that, and with... And with the road department performing a lot of this work, I think we can move things a lot faster than might otherwise be anticipated. So right now, the only date that we have that we're forecasting is the end of November, which will put the state attorney's office in a crunch, but I believe, like probably most commissioners I've talked to, that if we get into a crunch at the tail end, that the landlord is simply just going to have to work with us. I agree that they're not going to have anyone else ready to move in today that we, or they anticipate that the state attorney's office leaves, and I think that they're probably going to have to spend some money on their building to make some improvements anyway in order to attract other tenants, but having said that, I think we're going to be okay going forward, even if we're a little bit later than the date that we had hoped of everything completed by.
Mr. Vavat, isn't it the law that the landlord can't just kick them out? They have, you have to give them time while you're quote-quote negotiating a new lease and go month to month according to the agreement?
Not necessarily.
Give us an opinion, please.
Well, not necessarily. If the landlord, hearing all of this, is doing his due diligence, he's working toward having somebody, you know, in that building as soon as possible, so he doesn't have to give us any additional time.
So basically, he would, he could command whatever amount that he would want at that point for us to stay month to month?
Well, if we forced the issue and just stayed, he would have to file an action against us or to the state attorney's office to the victim, you know, and...
How long would that take?
On commercial, it would take 30 to 45 days, you know, to be able to do that anyway. I wanted to add one thing to what Mr. Harris said about the timing. Since the state attorney rep, you know, we said the end of November. Now, the end of November is when we're anticipating it to be final. The, what he's anticipated for substantial completion is going to be like the first week of November, so we've got kind of a little bit of play there, but, so that if there's portions of the building that can be occupied or have been partially CO'd at the time, can be, you know, working and getting moved over there. So, yeah, the deadline or our dead date right now is the end of November, but we've got a little bit of play, you know, in there. I don't think this is going to be an issue that we really need to hone in on until, you know, we get to September or something, and then we can address the issue with, you know, with the landlord at that time.
Okay, I just wanted to have some information to sleep on, that's all. All right. Any further discussion? Any further questions? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. Unrelated item.
Proceed.
The Sable Trail Pipeline Tour, I was going to ask the commission if you're ready to establish a date. You've got another, you've got a regular board meeting next Tuesday if the board would like. The reason I'm asking is because we need to advertise. I know in the agenda it said workshop. The reality is, it's more of a field trip than a workshop, but we need to advertise it so the public can be made aware and they can come and follow along as well if they choose to do so, but next Wednesday, if the board would like, it would be after your regular board meeting on Tuesday. I know Mr. Commissioner Fleming has been on it before. He assures me that it's quite a trek through the woods.
It is.
So if the board would consider next Wednesday as a potential late date for that, check your calendars. You could go ahead and get that advertised.
I'm, I'm good on Thursday, but I can make...
Thursday would be the best day for me, too, because there was an LCB meeting on Wednesday.
We did it on Tuesday before the meeting.
Well, we discussed that.
The trek through the woods and the uncertainty on getting back here in time, I was just trying to pick the time where we can ensure that we've got plenty of time to do what needs to be done.
And I prefer, I hope the weather's kind of cool, cold thing.
Never can tell in Florida, though.
Yeah. Get a snake.
I'm bringing a snake gun.
I'mma follow you.
Do we want to meet, we want to meet here, say, 8:00 or 8:15 on Thursday? That way, it's earlier if it's cooler, if that's what everybody's thinking.
8:15 this location, and then we'll all go out together?
Right.
Okay, we'll advertise that.
Sounds good. All right.
That's date eight, the 18th?
Yes.
Thursday?
Well, let me look.
That's Thursday, the 18th?
Yes, that is correct.
Thursday, the 18th at 8:15.
Yes.
Judicial and acts.
Put "field trip" in there.
Field trip.
Gotcha.
We got a provider on snakes.
Do you have a carton of milk and an apple?
It's economy.
We'll take care of you. We will ask you when we go into the brush that you hold hands and have a buddy system, all of that.
You probably need to get vests, like the orange vests and stuff.
That's right. We are just beyond hunting season, so we're a little safer.
No, I was just thinking if one of us fell in something, in some kind of hole or something like that. All right, so that's good. You got anything else, Mr. Harris?
You had a question?
Did we go over D and E?
Depends on how big the bus is, I reckon. We were talking about taking a minivan.
Yeah, let me, I'll comment on that. Couple other things I need to comment on. One, the clerk storage, I spoke to the clerk about these containers. And he's aware that he'll need to move those if, you know, we start making improvements in that location. Some of those are going to go away over the next two or three months potentially, so I think we're going to have a smaller number of containers. We'll have to find a location to put those in. What we could do potentially, at least temporarily, if we had to, would be to put them over here after the Nettie-Bastin school is removed. We could do that temporarily. Quite frankly, they're very unsightly, and I'm surprised they're even in downtown in the city limits, but it is what it is. So on a temporary basis at least, I think we'd have space over here that we could put them on the Nettie-Bastin property until we decide what we're going to do on a more permanent basis.
What if we were to take, just for the sake of giving us some more time to deal with them, we just took them over to the Douglas Center?
I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, we have suffered significant...
Vandalism.
Vandalism issues over there, multiple insurance claims.
Good enough.
Everything that we have bolted shut still gets torn apart, and there's entry into everything over there.
Well, it's, it's interesting. Every action is equal and opposite react. Just a second. You know, we probably need to discuss on the next agenda about storage for that, climate control probably, and also for the, for the machines for the...
Voting.
Voting.
Well, we actually have all the constitutional laws, or several of them.
They have needs, but here's my point. If we put the building where we're, we're talking about on Plans Three and Four, it doesn't allow for the expansion of this building. So we need to talk about further, further structures because we have needs.
I'd like to talk to the board about new structures that are energy efficient, that comply with all of the codes, in a secure location.
Well, what I'm talking about is, is if you do it now, because you have the need now. I mean, we're up against trying to figure out someplace to put this stuff, and if we're already got a contractor who's giving us a great rate on a building, then we need to piggyback on that and do it now as opposed to later, but it's just compounding effect.
I can begin working on that. I don't have any problem working on that right now.
Go ahead and put an extension on the proposed building right now and just evacuate that later on down the road if the state attorney grows and grow into that area. Otherwise, do it just like we did here. All this is stored back here.
Yeah, well, and I, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying you can't cover, you're going to cover up your, your existing dock to this building unless you're going to take the storage out of this building and move it into the new building.
I can handle it. I'll figure out. I'll come up with some later for you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, if you want to address the board, please come to the podium. But anyways, is it...
There's only three of the, of the, those, there's only three of the units our offices still use, and there's only one of those that will be very important that we, we have electricity to because we have to have a dehumidifier going in it as well as a, and it has to be climate controlled. We're hoping that it, it's the need for that building will go away in about three to four months. If y'all need to move it to the other side on this property and stuff, it'll be fine with us, but for right now, it's where we need it kind of close and we need it wherever it's going to be able to have electricity with it. Another one just has furniture and stuff like that as well, and we have one that has supplies, so we have to move supplies offsite. But like I say, if we can have, we can have the one close proximity where we can have access to it, and like I say, we're hoping in about three to four months, it's the need for it will be gone. The sheriff right now, I know he is using, is it three here?
At least two that are, three, including the one on the end.
So that's where you'll need to speak to the sheriff about those, and I don't know if, I don't know if y'all are using one or a lot.
I've spoken to the sheriff. He knows what plan is, and he's willing to work with us, do whatever's necessary, so, again, I'm thinking that at the very least, I'm convinced we could move them temporarily onto property that we have here until we have a more permanent solution in place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Realizing they couldn't go to his office on 136, only have plenty of land out there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they got a lot of space out there.
Any further?
Not on this subject matter. I do want to give the board an update on funding for railroad.
Okay, well, let's go back to discussing, I think there was a question on the floor about public riding along in the, in the van, but I don't, I don't, it just depends on the size of the van, I assume. Well, I'm sure they can follow. We're not going to be, we're not going to break any speed limits or anything. Yeah, it's a public, publicly, it's a public meeting. All right, anybody else? Mr. Harris, you can give us an update on the rail.
Before I go to the rail, let me just quickly comment on the other item Commissioner Gamble asked, because I had not spoken to the item E on here, suitability of soils and possible remediation. That's always a possibility. I will tell you that we did some simple borings out here with a hand auger behind this building. We had pretty decent soils down to 30 inches at least. That being the case, by the time we build up, once we scraped and build up, we shouldn't need a great deal of additional soil back this far, but as we go back closer to Pine, I have no idea yet. We haven't done any borings there, and I'll just keep you apprised of what we find when that happens. We've got to do all the underground locates in order to dig holes and make those determinations. So if we get into unsuitable soils, clearly, we'll have to undercut and remove those, but again, that's something that we can do with road department equipment personnel if necessary. The railroad funding is becoming a very big concern to me, has been all along. I've spent incredible numbers of hours, day and night, working on this, talking to our consultant. We had asked for a waiver to the CDBG cap that could be requested, and the cap had been established at a million and a half dollars. Our waiver was finally approved recently that would allow us to request in an application up to $3 million. The $3 million number was predicated on the sufficient number of new jobs to be created by the companies that we were naming or identifying in our application. That new job creation number is, is part of the formula that determines how much you can apply for. We've run into complications on one of those companies that we were using. The short story is that the companies that are included in the application, where we're forecasting their new jobs once this rail is completed and their facilities are completed, must be able to demonstrate within four months of our approval that they have the finances in place to build their new buildings in order to create those new jobs. One of the companies has had difficulty doing that. There's a good chance we're going to have to drop them out of our application. I've worked through a number of different options and scenarios and discussed those. I had a conversation with Mr. Jackson the other day. We've, I've run different scenarios and had him field some of these options with some of the companies in, in hopes that we could put something together that would work for us. If we are unsuccessful, and today, I don't believe that we're going to be successful with this third company that I'm speaking of, it has a potential million-dollar-plus impact on the amount of money that we could ask for in that CDBG application. You know that I've spoken to DOT about funding from them as well, and I'll have to revisit that conversation. I've felt like they've been holding out to see what we were going to be able to obtain from CDBG. If the company is going to fall out of the application, and that decision's going to have to be made sooner than later, because we have some very stringent timelines for submitting our application, it has to be done during the open cycle, and that's a very short cycle. Comes up very soon. We have a few weeks to work on that. I have Mr. Massey working on that with Mr. Fox, trying to bring together all of the components of that so that we can get it advertised properly because the board will have to entertain these changes in some board meetings and approve certain documents associated with the application and resolutions because of the advertising and approval requirements that are in that CDBG program. You had already approved these things. Most of this has already been approved, but again, we were chasing $3 million, and if we reduce it, we have to go back through a lot of that same process and approvals. So we'll be scrambling, trying to put that data together in the application and hold, redo some of those same hearings you've already been through for that purpose. The very important thing as well that's associated with this, in your application, we had to identify what we call gap funding. The gap funding that we had been utilizing, the number had been about $180,000, best I can remember, the difference between the cost of the railroad construction and what we had been able to identify in grant funds to pay for it. So the county commission was on the hook for that unless we found another source of funding. If this, this company drops out, can't come forward with sufficient jobs, then we're looking at that million-dollar-plus difference unless we can find another source of funding. But in the paperwork for that application, because of the timeline associated, we're going to have to state that the board of county commissioners is going to handle that gap funding unless we find another source of funding, and that's what the paperwork will state. And as you know, I've been scrambling, trying to find money. I spend a significant amount of my time as a county administrator trying to find the money, talking to every agency that I can think of. We also have, as you know, in this packet as well, you authorized me to go ahead and begin an application with rural infrastructure for the $700,000-plus to relocate that railroad crossing. So I'm looking everywhere that I can, trying to minimize the impact to local taxpayer because I'll just reflect upon earlier conversations a few years ago when this process started, when the state had conversations with us and all of the agencies associated. This catalyst site is supposed to be a site that provides a regional impact, positive impact. The only problem with that is that the region isn't helping pay for it. So we don't have other counties coming forward saying, "Let us help shore this thing up with $500,000 or $700,000." That benefit is really provided between this county and the state agencies that I can reach out to and get agreements with on helping us fund this. So that's the best summary version I can give you on where we happen to be right now. Mr. Chairman, I had planned to put it on the next agenda, but I would like for you to consider this now. The authorization to proceed with the application for the rural infrastructure funds, I've spoken to Mr. Fox, our consultant, about that. I've asked the board to go ahead and authorize us, us to utilize his... I've asked the board to go ahead and authorize us, us to utilize his services for that application. Very lengthy application, but between Mr. Fox and I, we've already put most of the data together, the narrative that would be associated with it, but he can get that application wrapped up for us very quickly, and it won't take three days of my time to try to put it together if, if he handles it for us.
Okay. You heard the request?
So moved.
Second county administrator. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same say.
Mr. Chairman, finally, I just want to, I probably don't do this often enough, but I want to compliment the commissioners for working with your staff on these complex issues associated with funding. This hasn't been an easy task, but we have been able to obtain over, near $11 million in state funding to help us with this catalyst site. I mean, from the beginning, as soon as we ran into problems with unsuitable soils, we were reaching out to state agencies, and they were willing to help us. Some of you know they've, many of those entities have made several trips to Swanee County and toured our site and looked at what we were dealing with in unsuitable soils and sinkhole remediation and all these other issues. I'm thankful for their support and helping the county, but I'm thankful for commission support in streamlining some of these processes and my requests for authorization to reach out and continue this thing moving without getting bogged down in minutia of bureaucracy that just causes these things to linger, and we'd be farther behind than we are today if that had occurred. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anything further in the morning? Questions? Comments? The only thing that I have, gentlemen, is at the last meeting, we were asked to put on the next meeting agenda was the discussion regarding the position of assistant county administrator. And I think, after some research, we have, through policy, we have said that we would allow county administrator to make hiring and firing decisions. And I think that that runs in harmony with kind of the way corporate structure goes today. If you have a CEO, he kind of hires his own staff to do, to do certain work, whether that be people that are already on staff and you give an additional responsibility to or not. In coaching, the head coach hires his own assistant coaches, people that he can work with. And I think it kind of oversteps the policy that we've set in place to do that. Now, we certainly can make recommendations to the county administrator for that purpose, but I think we should leave it up to him to make that determination. I'm opening up the floor to discussion on this if we need to, otherwise, I think that that's kind of the way we ought to handle it. Let you guys discuss that with Mr. Harris in private.
Well, I would just say this real quick. I do agree with you that it is his job to do the hiring, firing, set recommendations, but the issue that we have to face is if an emergency does occur, and he was out for a couple of days, not saying that that's an emergency, but it does give you a heads up of what if it's an extended illness? Then what? Then I think as a board, we do need somebody, as a number two man, that can step in and fill it if there is an extended illness. I mean, from day to day, we don't know what's going to happen, and I think it's kind of irresponsible for us to be in a situation where we don't have anybody ready to step up, but we're just going to have a, a void there. Now, y'all may feel different, but that's just, that's, I think, where it started from the other day, is just recognizing that, that seat was empty, and how long do you want to go with that seat being empty if something does happen?
Well, I can say that you need to have confidence in your, in your chairman, that he has a good working relationship with your county administrator. Each board, as the board changes, has to determine whether or not they can work with the current amount, the current administrator or the CEO, the majority of the board, is what I'm talking about. So if that chairman, you have confidence in him to lead you, and also that person should work very closely with the county administrator and be able to do that, then that person should be able to step in and fill the shoes, at least for a short period of time, until such time as you can make provision otherwise. I think that any time that you try to plan for something and prepare, as you're commenting on Commissioner Gamble, it's a good thing. Do I think that perhaps there is a, something that needs to be filled there? Yes, I do feel like assistant county administrator is, is a good move in the right direction. Having said that, it would call, it would be beholden upon us to create that position for Mr. Harris to fill, and if that's something that the board wants to do, then, then that's certainly something that we can do. Otherwise, we should ask him to let us know when he needs someone to fill that position, and then at that time, we can determine whether or not we need to create it. That's kind of the way I feel about it.
Yeah, my only comment about the, the chairman stepping in as that role is, I don't think any, any of the five of us have any idea what goes on, on a day-to-day basis as far as operations and could step in and fill that, the job to the capacity that needs, it needs to be met.
Well, I think that if, if you have, if you have confidence in that, in that person, which if you don't, then that person should be able to go up there and comprehend at least what's going on in the day-to-day with the existing staff. They can fill you in on, on a great deal of what's going on. I understand your point that if, if there was some tragedy in Mr. Harris's life where he had to be gone for a while, it certainly would put us at a disadvantage. At this time, I think that my working relationship with Mr. Harris is pretty good, and I have a good handle on what's going on, but that may not be the case in the future with a future chairman.
I'll offer a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wainwright.
There was a, there was a period of time that, that y'all probably all know, we were without a county coordinator. We were transitioning into, well, actually, this is prior to transitioning into an administrator position, and, and the chairman, during an interim time period, filled in as the county coordinator. And it's, I'll have to say that with the staff that we have on hand, the chairman is very capable of fulfilling that role, and if it, if it goes into months and months, FAC has an opportunity that we can, as members and as well as a small county coalition, to participate, that they have retired individuals that can fill in in interim time periods should the need arise until we fill, fill that position permanently. But I'll have to say that in the two times that I filled, filled that role, I relied very heavily on the staff that we had, and, and I believe it is the chairman's responsibility in all cases, whether the county administrator is in place or not. I think it's the chairman's responsibility at all times to be well-versed in every aspect of what's going on with the agenda, and all the information that can be shared with and brought before the board for deliberation. And so having said that, I'm, I'm satisfied with the way it is, and especially, I would, I'd like to say that since, since I served in that capacity years back, our staff has greatly improved, greatly improved. And so I feel even more confident today that, that with the staff that we have in place and the chairman's activities and being involved with what's going on, I think we're fine the way we are.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fleming.
Let's hope that that never occur, that, you know, some tragic could happen, but, you know, at any time, things could happen. And sit, sitting here listening, matter of fact, I was on the board at time when we didn't have a county coordinator, and the chair filled in and did a good job. And today, I feel as if the chairman, county administrator is not available, and we can use our chairman, because he worked closely with the county administrator, which we all do, but he worked more closely. And during the time of the agenda review, he's there. And, and as Commissioner Wainwright had said, that staff have improved greatly since I've been on this board, that at some point, you know, they all know what's going on. I don't think that would be a, a big issue. Now, we do, we should have someone in place, or Mr. Harris can appoint someone, and he knows he's out, he's going to be out to handle what he has, you know, on the agenda. So I, I'm, I'm impressed, and I'm proud of what we have right now in place of working for them, with them.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Commissioner Sessions, just one second.
Okay. My only concern, you know, the last time we brought it up, was the deadlines and things like that. If something does happen, is somebody in the staff well-aware of all the deadlines that are to meet, because we don't, we definitely don't want to miss anything. You made mention of all the money we've received over all the years, and just one quick slip and, and not being ready, ready to go, something happens, we might miss out on a great opportunity with deadlines of all these grants and things that you have up in the air right now. That was my biggest concern.
And, and I, I don't want to be misunderstood. I'm not asking us to go create another position, not another full-time position. I'm, what I envisioned was staff that we already have, but utilizing them or expanding their role to include that position, where they're more like an understudy of the administrator. They know what's going on day-to-day, where, like, kind of like what Mr. Fleming says, when they're, when he's not in, they're the one that steps up to do it. So I'm, by no means am I saying, let's go fill another office, create another position.
I mean, one comment.
Go ahead.
I was just thinking that, you know, Mr. Massey works quite a bit with you, and that for the purposes of a meeting, if you weren't here, he might could, you and him discuss things, and he could bring the information to the board in your stead if, if that was needed, if you're not here. Or, or like Commissioner Gamble said, or another department head that might expand their, you know, expand their responsibilities a little bit, but I'm not interested in creating a new position either.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
If I could comment, I have had experience with this very issue before in another location, and it works exactly like every one of you have commented on. I agree with everything I've heard here today. And quite frankly, Mr. Massey is very, very close to me and does work on a lot of these grants. These grants are very cumbersome, even with a consultant, and I'm very, very thankful, you've heard me say it before, I'm thankful for Mr. Fox and his contribution to this grant application process. But there's an incredible volume of information that has to be put together by your staff. You seldom see Mr. Massey, because he, he comes in here and sits in the back of the room sometimes, and occasionally you'll hear him speak to the issues of some of your land development issues. But he works very closely with me on hundreds of different items throughout the course of a year. He compiles a lot of information, handles a lot of research, reconciles a lot of what we're doing with state rules and regulations, and then we bring Mr. Pavat into those conversations as well. So Mr. Pavat spends time with Mr. Massey as well. He's familiar with what we're doing. And my first thought is that if I'm going to be out, if I have the luxury of scheduling a surgery on my terms one day, then I would ask Mr. Massey to sit in and be prepared to answer questions for the Board of County Commissioners. I have two right-hand people. Actually, I have more than that. I have to give credit to all of our staff and all of our department heads. They do a magnificent job. Clearly, I couldn't do what I do without 100% of their effort and support. But I do have two primary right, right hands. One of those is Mrs. Vickers, and the other is Mr. Massey. And you can see when you go in my office that those are the two offices closest to mine, and they are regularly in my office, working through multitudes of issues that you never see at the county commission meetings. They're routine business. And the third person that I rely on heavily is Mr. Pavat. He does come to the office. A lot of times, you'll see my vehicle and Mr. Pavat's vehicle at 7:00, 7:30 at night, working through issues that neither of us had time to work through during the, you know, regular business hours. So, but the three of them and myself, we work on all of your business. But I think if I were going to be out for a while, then Mr. Massey could certainly handle it, and he could bring other department heads in here that could speak to the complexities of any issue that came to the board that they would have the expertise in that he may not. So we will handle it going forward. I try to be sensitive to the needs of what we, our needs in personnel. Some of you that weren't here, I'll just share, at the time I took administration over, we had seven or eight people working in administration. Today, we really have three. And it isn't because we're doing less work. In fact, we're doing, we've more than doubled our work output over the last several years. You know that, because we're working on economic development. There was never a plan in place before to undertake economic development. But everything that we do requires a tremendous amount of time, but the people that you have working for you are doing a magnificent job for you and for me. But we're doing it with far fewer people than ever before. So we've saved, we looked at the numbers once, we had finance on them, I think it was $300,000 a year that we're saving now over what we had in staff previously, and it's working very efficiently. All of our people are cross-training, and they all multitask all day long, shifting gears from one issue to the next. But we won't leave a void if I'm out. In fact, one of these days, I hope to start taking vacations, and I'm going to try to schedule those vacations, and we'll have someone sitting over here to help you with any issue that we have to work through. And I've got all the technology I need, and most of you know it, where you can reach me 24/7, and, you know, we can handle the emails, we've got everything that we need to communicate readily.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one more time, just to come in.
Commissioner Fleming.
I, I did want to mention Ms. Vickers, and when I was out at Public Works yesterday, I told her, and I told Mandy, you know, how great a job that they do do. And I also told Mandy that I'd probably call her last Monday night, which I did. Woke up out of the sleep, so I, I feel confident in the time that I've been on this board, again, with staff and along with a counselor here, that the job will be well-done. So I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with what's happening, how it's going at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Any further discussion? All right. Guys, ready for some public comments?
We'll let it fly.
All right. First person we're going to call up is Deborah Randall. Let me make sure we get that right. And we're going to talk about 252.
Deborah Johnson Randall, PO Box 803, Welborn, Florida. Good morning, gentlemen. I have a question about the Swanee County Agreement Number 2016-44. Temporary workspace esband for Sable Trail Pipeline. My question is, it says in sum of $10 and other valuable consideration. May I ask what the valuable consideration is?
Two thousand nine hundred and ninety more dollars, because I already asked that.
I didn't.
He asked the same question.
I missed it. I know. Would you answer it, please?
The, the actual amount paid for it.
Ah, yes, sir.
For the right was $3,000, and it is just typically.
Written that way.
$10 and other valuable consideration.
So they're paying $1,000 a year to use the county property, public property. They're a multi-billion dollar company, our county needs money, and that's all we charge them?
Well, let's, let's look at this from a perspective that it is an eminent domain, you know, proceeding that it would have come to. And this is just a temporary workspace that they're going to utilize and have it available to be able to do it. The space itself was necessary because of the angle at which the road was, the jack and bore was going under the road. It's not in the regular workspace, but in case the, the. It's not in the regular workspace, but in case the equipment had to come further back, that's what's utilized along there on the property. It won't be utilized for the entire period of time. It'd only be for about the 15 to 30 days that they'll actually be doing the jack-and-bore under the road.
And then that's it?
That's it.
So, but they gave it till 2019?
They have the opportunity to utilize it for that period of time.
15 to 30 days?
Is the real use.
Yeah. I was just going to say, guys, I mean, they got some money, and we need money. We should be at least taking advantage of the people that want to come in here instead of putting on taxpayers.
Like any other situation where an entity is acquiring property and they have the power of eminent domain, the price that would be charged for the property.
Understood.
You know, goes through what is a fair market value process, you know, for this, and this was a temporary workspace easement. It's not even very easement, easement.
Gotcha. Eminent domain has not been established in Florida, to my knowledge, on this project?
They will be utilizing the process in federal court. They'll utilize the federal eminent domain statute. That's what I'm anticipating that Sable Trail will do. They have the right to be able to do that as one of the utilities to be.
In Georgia, landowners sue, and it was on a one-by-one basis.
Georgia has a different eminent domain structure than what Florida does.
And ours does not state that private companies have the right to eminent domain.
I would disagree with that analysis. There are several companies that, several privately-held companies that are public utilities that are given the right statutorily of eminent domain.
Public utilities, not for export. You know, public utilities, that's public need and necessity. I know, we're not going to get into all this.
You asked me your jurisdictional question.
Yes, but I think the Supreme Court in Georgia had to rule whether eminent, or actually, several courts ruled whether eminent domain could be used. It has not been established in Florida.
Again, I disagree with your analysis, and Georgia law is different from Florida.
I'll agree to disagree, sir. Thank you, and good morning.
Moving on, we'll listen to Patricia Taman. She's going to talk to us about pipeline.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Taman, PO Box 691, Live Oak, Florida. Okay. Commissioners, do you really understand how your decisions in regards to the pipeline will affect so many people's dreams that are off without this? Some of you have lived here most of your life, have been blessed with all the beauty, natural resources that the area holds, Swanee River, springs, good air, water, and access to unspoiled acreage of land. For others who have moved here from elsewhere, we have not been as fortunate. I find it interesting that some of the people that are most vocal against the pipeline are, by other standards, outsiders considered. We know what is out there in the world and have chosen to make Swanee County our home. I, for one, had a dream. I lived in Pensacola for 25 years after trying Miami, West Palm. I had a plan of retiring in Pensacola, but then the unbelievable happened, the BP oil spill. The oil spill was not supposed to have been possible. We were told about how safe and all the extra measures that had been taken, shut-off valves, monitoring daily. That all sounds so familiar, just what you are being told about the pipeline, but then it did happen, the oil spill that forever changed the Gulf. I beg of you not to turn this beautiful place into what everyone is running from. It is not a matter of if, but only when and where the pipeline will bust due to a sinkhole or some other cause. Don't sell Swanee County and so many people's dreams for such a measly $2.7 million. Men, that is an insult. What you stand to lose here financially, that, I won't use profanity. I'm going to close now, but I would like for you to ponder Randy's comments just a second ago. This area is sinkhole-prone, and it's not getting better. The soil was unsuitable out of the catalyst site. Remember, this is a stone's throw from the pipeline path. I'm so proud of you all that you're going to go out there and walk it and see for yourselves. Your men know this area. You know the soil. Don't let money entice you into something that you and your grandkids and their children will forever remember you for, that you helped make a decision that ruined this area. Anyway, thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Taman. Closing comments? Anybody? Okay. All I need is one thing, gentlemen.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Gamble. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.